Closed session, meeting to order on March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Current time is three thirty. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the board?
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Proton Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
Absent from this closed session meeting is Councilmember Beaver.
And do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay. With that, then we'll move into our conference room. And the time, still three thirty.
Thank you.
Baby.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call this regular scheduled City Council, Successory Agency and Housing Authority meeting for March 24th. Successory Agency and Housing Authority meeting for March 24th, 2025, to order current time, straight up at six o'clock. We are going to have at this time Pastor Randy Balling from Grace Point Fellowship come up and do our invocation. Following that, we will have the pledge of allegiance by our Chief of Police.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and gratitude. We acknowledge that we are blessed to live in such a beautiful city, from our snow-capped mountains to our vibrant flowers, from our verdant lush hills to our noble and colorful trees. We see evidence of your majesty and provision. Lord, we readily confess we need a special touch of your presence and guidance as we gather in this place of leadership and service. You are the author of wisdom, the source of justice, and the giver of every good and perfect gift. We invite your Holy Spirit to dwell among us that all we do here may be marked by truth, integrity, and a heart for the people of this city. Lord, we remember the faith of those who came before us, the founders of this nation, who in times of division and discord sought your divine hand in the shaping of our land. Inspired by their reliance on biblical truth and inalienable rights, we ask that you bless this city and its leaders with wisdom, discernment, and courage. May every decision made within these walls reflect your righteousness and love. Bless our city, oh Lord, our families, businesses, schools, first responders, and churches. Protect those who serve, strengthen those who lead, and comfort those in need. May Ukepa be a place where justice and mercy walk hand in hand, where love for neighbor prevails, and where your light shines brightly in every heart. We commit this time, this gathering, and this city into your hands in the mighty name of Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior, I pray. Amen.
Please place the flag under your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Captain. All right, moving on to roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Beaver?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Venable?
Here.
Mayor Thorpe?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council considered items A and C in closed session. There's no reportable action from those items. The City Council will reconvene back into closed session at the end of this meeting to consider B, D, and E.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda. However, I'd like to note that we did have an amendment to the staff item number seven pertaining to citizen service applications to city commissions. The council has been provided with the amended staff report. It's been placed on the city website, and there's copies in the back of the room.
Thank you, and I think Councilman Beaver would like to make a change of the agenda.
Yes, sir, if you please. Before we do that, I would ask for a quick moment of silence in the memory and honor of Deputy Hector Cuevas, who died tragically last week while he was protecting our county from some criminals that have gone unchecked for too long. So if we could just have a quick moment of silence before I move on to the agenda item. Thank you. Piggybacking on that moment of silence we just had, our city hall's flags remain at full staff in spite of the tragic death of a deputy sheriff that wears the exact same uniform as our Ukepa sheriff's deputies. I would ask that, given the urgency of the matter and because his funeral will take place prior to us having another meeting, I would ask that we agenda or we have an item to discuss amending our flag policy and also to direct staff to immediately lower that flag to respect the deputy sheriffs who patrol our streets and their fallen brother.
So I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
First and the second?
Oh, second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, you go with that. All right. All right, moving on to the public safety update. Captain?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to try to get through this without coughing. I'm getting over a little cold, so please bear with me. This will be your public safety police department report for February of this year. In the month of February, we had 3,281 calls for service. We averaged a four-minute response time to our emergency calls for service. And again, like I stated in our last meeting, our peak call times remained that Wednesday through Friday timeframe. And from about lunchtime to mid-afternoon, mid, you know, early evening was our highest call volume times for February. Our Part One crimes for the month of February, we had one sexual assault, 22 aggravated assaults, 12 burglaries, 22 thefts, five, and five motor vehicle thefts for the month of February. February arrests, we had 90 arrests, 64 of which were bookings in one of our adult correctional facilities. Our main arrests offenses for the month were narcotics-related weapons offenses, domestic violence incidents, and warrant arrests. Our traffic enforcement division for the city issued 222 traffic citations. They investigated 22 traffic collisions. They performed two Office of Traffic Safety operations for the month. One was focused on primary collision factors, and the other was focused on DUIs. For a station, we had 12 DUIs for February. I do want to emphasize that we've seen an increase in daytime DUIs, so that's been a concern for us, who are really trying to put an emphasis on targeting daytime DUIs because they have been an issue for us recently, as well as we've seen a big influx in contacting unlicensed drivers in the city. We had 23 unlicensed drivers cited in the city in February, so that's quite a bit, considering, you know, our population and just how many people we have out on our roadways. We want to make sure that our drivers are licensed and operating their vehicles in a safe manner for everyone in the city. And then they also towed 27 vehicles. Our SOP team, they handled 37 transient calls for service. They handled three complaints that came via the city app. Four subjects accepted some form of assistance. The team made 30 arrests. They issued 20 citations. They conducted 77 park and vacant property patrols, extra patrols. They issued 18 parking citations. Then I want to highlight not only the success story that you see here at the bottom, but I also have an additional one. So the team gave a presentation to our library staff here in February, and as a result of that presentation on the services that the team can provide to our unhoused population, the library staff came in contact with somebody who was in need of those services, and then they were able to redirect them to us, to the, to the police department, and we were able to get an individual the services that they needed, as well as an introduction to our behavioral health staff at the station, which just goes to show that the team is out there, they're contacting our businesses, and we're seeing the fruits of those efforts. And then, this isn't a February success story, but it just happened the other day, and I thought it was a really cool story. So last Thursday, the SOP team was out doing what they do, making contact with people, and they noticed an elderly subject wandering around the city. They made contact with this person, and the person was found to be an at-risk missing person out of Riverside County. The subject had walked away from his caretakers in Riverside County, and he was trying to get to the Hopi Indian Reservation in Arizona. He was a Native American gentleman. The team was able to link him or contact him, figure out who he was, get him back into contact with his caretakers. This person, for lack of a better term, was gravely disabled, really needed assistance, and that's just, again, just showing the fruits of the effort of the team being out there, making proactive contact with people. This person, by all accounts, had been in the city for, for a few days, so he had only been without the proper care and the necessary care for a few days. We were able to contact him. Not sure how he got to the city, but we were able to recontact him back with his caretakers, with his family, get him back into a safe environment, and then hopefully they can coordinate to get him to the Indian Reservation where he was ultimately trying to go. So a good success story that I wanted to highlight. And then additionally, one thing that's not on the presentation is I left these on the back table. We have seen some daytime burglaries and theft calls that you see month after month. Thefts seem to be a really big problem for us. It's one of our main concerns. So this is really a door hanger that we make an effort to try to pass out at homes that are being, you know, residents, residential areas that are being targeted for, you know, by thieves. And it's just basically how not to be a victim. It's just some helpful handy tips, how not to be a victim, things you can do to help protect yourself, help protect your home and your vehicles. So I left some of these back on the table back behind us. Our volunteers at the station went into a residential area not too long ago where we were seeing an influx of daytime burglaries and hungnies, and made contact with all the residents that they could there to just educate people and help people be a little more aware and how to protect themselves and not be a victim. So a great job, again, our volunteers, I can't thank them enough. We couldn't do what we do without them. So with that, that's the end of my presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. In regards, not to your presentation, but in regards to one of your, our fellow coworkers, that fallen officer, if you hear that there's anything that we can do as a city or the council can do to be of assistance to that family or that station, would you please let us know?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any council members have any questions for Captain? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fire Department, your turn.
Good evening, Mayor Thorpe and esteemed City Council. My name is Liz Brown. I function as the Chief of Highland, and so Grant is my partner, so we help each other out. He is on a cruise right now, enjoying some very well-deserved margaritas, probably. So I'm going to fill in for him tonight. Okay, so this is going to be our stats for the month of February. Overall, we ran 706 calls. As you can see, it's broken down by station, station three being our busiest station. Station one, 271 calls. Station two, 135, and station three, 300. As compared to this time last year, calls have gone up approximately 5%, which is pretty indicative of what Ukepa has been doing over the last five, five to 10 years. Cut up the pie as normal with most fire departments. The majority of our calls are medical aids. 55 other fires, we had 11 vehicle fires and 45 public service assists, 11, oh, I'm sorry, nine vehicle, or vegetation fires, and 54 just assists, whether it's the city or just helping somebody. So that's just kind of all encompassing of assist. A significant event, we had a hiker rescue in Thunderbird Hiking Trail. It was a husband and wife couple. They were walking, and she stepped wrong, rolled her ankle, unfortunately wasn't able to make it down. We tried to assist her just with assisting her with walking. She wasn't able to do it, so we did end up getting our utility vehicle with the Stokes and brought her down that way, and she was transported. Very minor injuries, but it's, we have a lot of those up in that area. We do have a Firewise Community Workshop to reduce the risk from wildfires at the Ukepa City Wednesday. That was on Feb, that was on February 26th. I was not there. I'm sure on the next update, Grant can get you know how the outcome was. Training, training is one of our essentials of our job function. So this last month, we had elevator rescue training, company training. Every year, we're required to be able to perform certain aspects of our job, throwing a ladder, pulling a hose, and it's timed, and everybody that is on, that is working in the field is required to pass. So that's something that occurs just before fire season starts. So everyone has been signed off and are able to continue functioning in their role. Also, they, there was a community service staff Narcan training, which we're starting to see more and more of not just first responders doing Narcan training, but just everybody. And Skip Miller, he was recognized as firefighter of the year for this last 2024. I worked with Skip a long time. He's a very good firefighter and, and well-deserved honor. And that's it for February, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Council have any questions for?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Brings us to Code Enforcement. Mr. Trevor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is going to be your February 2025 Code Enforcement Statistics Report. So for February, we opened 53 new code cases. 13 of those, 53, were resolved by the end of the month. This photograph on the right-hand side is an example of that. This is the before photograph. In the next slide, you'll see the after, excuse me, photograph. The top cases are going to be unpermitted construction, excessive trash and debris, as exemplified in this photograph here. As far as inspection activity goes, the code enforcement officers conducted 265 inspections in February. 129 of those were closed out. We received $3,262 and received citation fines or fees, and this photograph is the after. So before, after. The notable event here is going to be the fine forgiveness program. In February, we adopted the fine forgiveness program and went live with it. So far, we've seen very, very good results. I don't know exactly how many people have signed up. It's really changing by the hour who have signed up for the fine forgiveness program, but we've reached out on social media. We've sent every single person that has an open code enforcement case a registered letter saying that they're eligible for this fine forgiveness program. We put things out on our website, et cetera. We're doing everything we can to close these cases out and give these people the opportunity to kind of restart their lives as it relates to code enforcement. That's the end of my report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. That's impressive.
They're doing a good job.
Good job. Council have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that brings us to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments tonight?
We do. We'll start with Gus Garcia, followed by Mary Ruder.
And just a reminder, we have a three-minute time limit, and council is not allowed to engage during that timeframe.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and city staff. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Gus Garcia. I am a senior investigator for the Center for Contract Compliance. I'm here because, like all of you, I care about the public safety and making sure workers are treated fairly and ensuring our tax dollars are spent responsibly. As the city considers proposals for the on-call tree trimming services, I want to bring to your attention a few key areas where simple improvements to the RFQ could make a big difference for safety, accountability, and fair competition. Tree trimming might not, might seem straightforward, but when you're dealing with large trees, heavy equipment, and traffic near busy streets, it's specialized, high-risk work. That's why the California State Licensing Board has specific licenses for contractors performing this work. Right now, the RFQ does not require contractors to hold the C-31 traffic control license or the C-49 tree service license. The C-31 ensures contractors know how to set up proper traffic control, keeping workers safe and the public when working near roads. The C-49 confirms contractors have the right training, experience, and equipment to perform tree trimming, pruning, and removals. Without these licenses, the city risks hiring unqualified contractors, which could lead to safety hazards, property damage, and even injuries. These licenses exist for a reason, and making them a requirement will help ensure only skilled professionals work in the community. Another concern is workers' compensation compliance. Unfortunately, some contractors misclassify employees or submit fraudulent insurance certificates to cut costs. This not only hurts workers who may not be covered when they get injured, but it also puts the city at risk for liability claims. A simple fix, the city should require insurance providers to submit proof of workers' comp coverage directly to the city. This would ensure coverage is active, legitimate, prevent fraud. This would ensure coverage is active, legitimate, prevent fraud, and protect workers and taxpayers from unnecessary risks. This isn't about adding red tape or complicating the procurement process. It's about making sure the city hires responsible, qualified contractors who do the right job. Strengthening these requirements will improve safety for workers and the public, protect taxpayer dollars from unnecessary legal exposure, and ensure only fair, responsible contractors get public contracts. I encourage the council to amend RFQ to require C-31 and C-49 licenses and implement direct insurance verification. These are small, practical steps that will go a long way protecting our city and our workforce. Thank you for your time, for your commitment, for doing what's best for Ucaipa. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Ruder, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
Okay, my name is Mary Ruder, and I am a resident of the North Bench. So today I am here representing the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. Justin, I wondered where you went. So I want to give you an update about what's been going on with the chamber. As most of the council people should know, there've been some issues with starting our uptown marketplace. So the Board of Directors has made the decision at this time to postpone re-establishing the uptown Friday night, well, we were going to do it Saturdays, marketplace until those obstacles have been overcome. We have been focused on building our membership and reaching out to both new and established businesses, and our membership roster has been growing every single week. I would like to commend Ryan Miller, whose title I never can remember, but I know he's the small business, he's the person who brings businesses into our community. And so I'd like to commend him because one of the things that Ryan always does is recommend the chamber to new businesses who are coming in, and we have gotten a number of new business members in the chamber due to Ryan's recommendation. So we appreciate that tremendously. The Board of Directors has been speaking to many small businesses in town, and some of them have expressed some concerns regarding the economy and their sales. And I can vouch for that as a small business owner. Oh, we've had a rough year. Several of our business owners have made note that they rarely see council people or the upper echelon of our, of our city staff in their small businesses. So as the chamber's mission is to promote and support the local businesses, especially those small micro businesses, I urge everyone in Ucaipa to shop local and to our council and our community leaders and our leaders in the city staff, especially go into the local shops, especially those small ones. Introduce yourself. We love to hear that. Many of the businesses here in town are staffed by their owners because they are micro businesses. And business owners love to see your faces in our businesses, whether you buy something or not. Come in, look around, talk to us. We love to see you. And finally, I would like to express appreciation to Rachel, Rachel Gusterson, who is the editor of the Ucaipa Calamasa News Mirror, for promoting local businesses and that are chamber members by publishing articles in the News Mirror on a regular basis. The chamber, the Board of Directors.
Sorry, we had a.
We're okay?
We had a technical difficulty on our timer, but your, your time is up.
Okay, so I'm good. So thank you, Rachel.
Next, we have Dr. Hanson Wong.
I hope it doesn't get any louder than that. So want to thank the city planners and our economic development for bringing in a store that hopefully will open soon that I frequent, and I don't have to drive this far and it'll save me gas. So I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I appreciate the city council for looking at the budget and being transparent. And all I'm suggesting that whether it's the city employees or the city council, that if you're voting on something or presenting something that is above and beyond the general plan and all the different density bonuses and so on, that you just say why it's important because again, the transparency will help people understand. So a couple of other things. April 26th, Run for the Hills, we're being with Crafton Hills on it, and since, you know, people like Councilman Beaver did it so quickly, it's going to be harder. So just to let you know. So welcome any of you that are willing to come. In addition, Healthy Ucaipa is presenting a lecture series that April opioids and overdose, May water and sun safety before the summer, and then somewhere June nutrition, August suicide prevention, and October exercise. So again, when the dates are finalized and the times and stuff, we'll try and get the, our staff to send it out to all of you so that you can promote it because I think it's important for the, our community members to learn about these items, and if you can attend, that would be great as well. So thank you for your time, and we'll see you at the different events.
I have no more cards. I do have some for item number seven. We'll hear those comments when we listen to that item.
All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. This is the time where if we have any conflicts of interest, it's time for city council to disclose those. Are there any tonight? Seeing none, hearing none? Okay. With that, do I have a motion to approve items one through five?
I know we approve ones through five.
Can I have a first? Have a second?
I'll second that.
First and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. No poll. That takes us to item number six. Ms. Megan Wolf.
Wow, I actually had to put the microphone up. That was exciting. Normally anyways, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, I have a special event permit application for the Redlands Bike Classic. As staff, we always try to improve, and so today's report will be a little bit different than the previous special event permit applications that you've received. The difference what you'll see is that we included the department head's review and signatures on the application as well as summarized their feedback. At this time, I'd like to bring the applicant up to the microphone to talk to the council about the event and their application. So without further ado, Mark Shaw.
Thanks, Megan. Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of the council. Thank you for allowing us to come and present for the, we'll call it the 40th year of the Redlands Bicycle Classic, 38 actual races because of our two COVID years, but we are celebrating our 40th anniversary. We've had a, a long tradition of being in Ucaipa, absent last year, but looking to try to find a way to come back. And so one of the, the routes that we created, which is a new route, is the one that you have in your staff packet and that is up there on the, on the screen. The, the men and the women, we both, we have full fields for both, so we'll have about 200 men racing, about 120 women, and then we will also have a, some junior racing going on this year as well. So some of the real up and comers. The men will do 12 laps, the women will do nine. I would do a half a lap probably, and that would be about it, but they're a glutton for punishment, so we, they keep asking for us to make it harder, so we figured what better? We'll send them down Sand Canyon from the start line near Crafton Hills. They'll go across to Overcrest or Walnut, basically. They'll climb Walnut, they'll climb Overcrest. No, it's not an air. They will turn left on Tennessee and go through the dirt. They will traverse the dirt until it continues back to pavement down Tennessee to 16th. They'll make a left turn, that nice steep, quick little jaunt up there to Sand Canyon, left turn and do it all again. So that is the route, part obviously being county, part being city. We're working very closely with the police department and the fire department to handle the necessary services there. Both have been great to work with, and so essentially we are looking for the street closure permit or modified. Really, the only street closure will be 16th, just because it's so tight and narrow there, it would be really rough to run cars and bicycles at the same time. Sand Canyon, we're doing something that we did a couple of years ago. We'll split Sand Canyon, so basically we'll run two lanes of traffic in the westbound lanes, and the riders will have the eastbound lane. And the reason for that, obviously the riders will be going, it'd be counterintuitive because they're on the wrong side of the road, but when you get down to Crafton, it allows us to make the turn and still maneuver traffic and whatnot. So that's why it's designed that way. So there will be traffic, and just like all of our events, the vehicular traffic can run in the same direction as the course. So we have that option when we need to move vehicles around. For example, on Tennessee, they would just be basically following the race so that the residents will be able to get to their homes. We do have the mailer plan, so all of the residents will be notified via the mailer and available to answer any questions. Oh, sorry, Megan has more. Hang on.
Thank you, Mark. I thought I would sum up some key points. The applicant has paid the $200 application fee, and we're thankful for that. In addition, the applicant has agreed to pay the police department fees and costs associated with the event, as well as fire department costs should they arise associated with the event. Development Services Department and the Community Services Department have no fees associated with this event. This concludes our report, and we can answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, both of you. Any questions for them? Councilman Shaw, thank you for presenting to us today. On the other side of the dais today. Yeah, talking to us now. No, this is, you know, I'm glad that it's coming through Ucaipa again. I think there was some, there was concerns. Some people didn't like that it wasn't, that we weren't focused on it, or Ucaipa wasn't focused during the race. I know there's always been some vehicular concerns, but I think it looks like you're mitigating it on a Friday with people being, you know, the, the high school being just down the street, but really Ucaipa Boulevard is unaffected. And mitigating the traffic on Sand Canyon, I think is, is a great idea. This is, this is an event that brings people from around the world to our area. And two, our, our Chamber of Commerce's point, Mary's point, these are folks that come here and spend their money. They're going to come here, they're going to want to, you know, visit Soaring Swine's Acres and get some jam right after the race. Oh, and other places, of course. I don't, I'm not cer, so certain that actually these athletes are going to be really want to eat a lot of jam. Maybe they will. I'm not sure. I would. That's true. Yeah, rebuild those simple carbs. I'm glad you guys are bringing this back to us. I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can, we can capitalize on the advertising aspects of kind of getting the chamber maybe involved in advertising what businesses can be of service, what maybe our hotel can be of service to some of these families that are coming in from out of the area and really bring some money from, from out around the world to, to into our community. So if there's a way that maybe the chamber and the Red, the folks in the Redland Bicycle Classic can talk in the, in the lead-up to this, they have a little, little less than a month to actually, two weeks now to get this going, I think there's still an opportunity to advertise.
Absolutely, we'll do that. And, and one more thought, we, you know, we do host housing. We put, most of these riders stay with, with local houses throughout the community, and I think we have either eight or 10 teams that are staying in Ucaipa, at homes in Ucaipa. So they have that tendency to shop here and to go out here, and they do spend money in town. So certainly there, there should be some, some benefit to that as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor Pro Tim Shaw, good to see you. Former CHB commander, you have a well-mapped out course, obviously. And I just want to remind you that Ucaipa High Baseball Varsity beat you in the first league game, Redlands, when you guys came out. Very proud of that rivalry, so I just want to remind you of that. So, but thank you for, and also thank you for picking up the cost. We appreciate that, and that'll mitigate some of the issues. But thank you and your professionalism. It's always good talking to you, and welcome to our meeting, and welcome to, to meet everybody here.
Thank you, and you're welcome to come down to ours, too, because they're exciting as well, so.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
No comments on this item.
Do I have a motion? So moved. A second?
Second.
First and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Are you going to race? Megan?
Thank you.
For sure.
Okay, that brings us to item number seven. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Item seven tonight is the citizens, citizen service appointments to citizen committees. Over the last couple of months, we have looked at the various commissions and committees of the city, and council has made numerous appointments. Tonight, we will be looking at the Mobile Home Park Committee, the Measure S Citizen Oversight Committee, and the Youth Advisory Committee. Before I jump into my presentation, we do have four public comments on this item, so if it's okay with the council, we'll start there. Okay, thank you. We will start with Michael McHugh, followed by Renee Waddell.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, City Council fellow Ucaipans. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight on behalf of the Measure S Oversight Committee. I look forward to meeting those of you who I don't, who don't have a clue who I am in the near future. A little bit about me, I landed in California after my time in the United States Marine Corps, have been actively involved in the Ucaipa community, both personally and professionally, since 2008. I previously ran two businesses here, Smart Solar Power up in Oak Glen and Progressive Energy Solutions off of Seventh. After some time away, I am proud to once again call myself Ucaipan. Beyond business, I've been deeply engaged in our committee through coaching youth sports, including basketball, Ucaipa American Little League, Spartan Soccer Club, YVYSO, and flag football. Additionally, I've served as the past president of the San Bernardino Rotary Club and led a military slash baseball-focused nonprofit called Operation Glove, where we collected baseballs and baseball gloves and sent them, sent them to our deployed military around the world. I am also a volunteer diver for the LA County Search and Recovery Team, and through these roles, I've organized fundraisers and initiatives that have directly benefited Ucaipa residents, such as donating solar power to a local marine who was seriously wounded in combat, who was Corporal Justin Crabbe. His home was part of the Homes for Troops Program off of Snowview Court, and raising funds for a local widow whose husband was tragically killed in a local hit-and-run while walking home from church. I also collaborated with fellow citizens to organize a United Way Blood Drive and Community Picnic in just nine days following the terrorist attacks in San Bernardino, benefiting one resident who was here in Ucaipa. I believe in accountability, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. My professional experience in business management has taught me how to maximize resources and operate efficiency on an op, op, sorry, operate efficiently on a limited budget, competing against larger corporations through word of mouth, honesty, and integrity. I'm committed to serving as a neutral and transparent member of the committee, ensuring our city remains financially strong and continues to grow into a thriving community we all know and love. I have always heard that the first step to recovery is admitting that there's a problem, so I was happy to see my fellow citizens take the first step with the passing of Measure S, thereby at least brightening the future of public safety and community programs here in Ucaipa. However, that pro, that progress can easily be eliminated without proper oversight, and I would be proud to be a part of that process. I'm not interested in any political drama. My priority here is to make sure that Ucaipa is on the right path for long-term successes. I would truly appreciate your support in joining the Measure S Oversight Committee. Please let me know if there's anything further I can provide. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I would happily field any questions. Don't everybody speak at once. Cool, all right.
Next, we have Renee Waddell, followed by Terry Boone.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Renee Waddell, and I am glad to be here this evening to talk to you, introduce myself so that I'm not just a piece of paper. I am applying for the Oversight Measure S Committee. I retired a couple of years ago as a certified public accountant, and I think that I would bring a great skill set to a committee like this. I have good analytical skills, good detail-oriented, work well with others. I love this community. I've been a homeowner since 1994. I went to Ucaipa High School, Crafton Hills College. My kids went to all the schools in Ucaipa, and so this is our home, and this is the place that we care about. I think that the city's doing well, and I'd like to continue to see it thrive and support the families and the safety of this community by participating in the committee. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Terry Boone, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
I would like to advocate for Dr. Hanson Wong and Ed Timmons for the Measure S Citizen Oversight Committee. I think that the current city council is making some wise choices and is being fiscally responsible, and I think those two men will help with that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Dr. Hanson Wong.
I'm sure you're tired of hearing about me and from me. The only thing I wanted to bring up is the fact that I was inadvertently ghosted on the original agenda packet. I am, I do exist. I do want to be on the position. I do have experience and organizational skills that will help. And I have been listening to people about why they voted for Measure S. And I think we should fulfill the desires of our community. Thank you.
I have no more public comments on this item. Okay, so we will actually begin with the Mobile Home Park Committee. Okay, if you turn your attention to the screen, you will see the current roster of this committee. We currently have two vacant spots for the Ucaipa Mobile Home Park Residents under rent control category. The city clerk's office received one additional application from Mr. Bruce Nelson. So tonight, we're asking that the city council consider that application for one of the vacant, one of the two vacant positions.
Do I have a motion from anybody?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. And then the city clerk's office will be running an additional recruitment to try to still fill that last vacant spot. Okay, we're going to move on to the Measure S Citizen Oversight Committee. This committee was established to independently review and advise upon the city's expenditure of proceeds generated by the transactions in youth tax. The committee consists of five members who shall be residents of the city and will meet as necessary. Now, we don't have, when we established this committee, we did not establish any certain criteria. We do have a resolution in place which states that each member of the city council may nominate at least one person for membership on any commission or committee established by the city council. And then members shall be appointed by a majority vote of the city council. So we could default to that process unless the city council has different direction.
Mayor, I had, one of our council members approached me earlier this week and had a idea of, while not required, possibly entertain the idea of each district having a representative on that commission. So what that would mean is that you've got several applicants here. So if you're from District One, you pick somebody from District One. If you're from District Two, you pick from Two. Well, therein lies the problem, that in District Two, we don't have an applicant.
Correct.
So if that were to be the case, then can we leave that open for District Two to try to get some applicants to be able to be considered for that district? Because all but one district has got applications.
Absolutely. So we are, like I mentioned, for the Mobile Home Park Committee, we are running additional recruitments. We're still running a recruitment for vector control as well. We're still trying to fill those positions. We could, you know, post it on social media specifically to the vacancy for District Two. But yes, the city council could definitely take action tonight, if you'd like, on the others, and then we could bring it back for the District Two.
And then it could even be, let's say, District Two doesn't want to go that route. They could then pick from whatever applicants are here tonight, right? It doesn't have to be that we have to go and extend that period of time. But if we wanted to go that route, I'm not trying to speak for him. But if he wanted to go that route, then that would be the other option.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because I, well, I asked one of the applicants that are on if she would run, and she did. So she's on here, so.
Okay. So.
No, she's not from my district, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that in mind, so we don't have a free-for-all and throwing elbows up here on the microphone, can we do it from an approach of just by district order?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then make the nomination, and then from there, have a vote independently from each one as we go down through the district? So I'll go last.
Point of clarification, so in my, are we trying to push towards, I'm limited towards the three applicants who reside in District Four? Is that what we're kind of, the council's talking about?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I would be limited to pointing somebody who resides in District Four as on the District Four representative, is that what?
You don't, you don't have to. If you wanted to pick somebody else, you could. But that was something that someone brought to my attention. They thought there might be a consideration due to the high profile of Measure S. At least then, each district would have, would have a representation from that district on that, on that committee to oversee that, since it was kind of a hot topic, lack of a better term.
So we start with District One, then, right? All right.
So, okay.
Absolutely. So we can start with District One, Councilmember Miller. We do have the list of applicants over off to the right-hand side. They are sorted out by district. Do you have a nomination?
Yes, I do. It's my honor to nominate Greg Franklin for District One.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
You have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to District Two. Mayor Pro Tim Venable, do you have a nomination?
I do. I asked Denise Allen to, to come help us out here, and I think that she'd be a great asset for us.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay, District Three, we'll move on to Councilmember Woolsey.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Kenny Wilson.
Second? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, next.
Okay, District Four, Councilmember Beaver.
I'll nominate Dr. Wong.
I'll second that.
Here we go, a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
And lastly, we'll go to District Five, Mayor Thorpe.
Okay, ma'am, I'll nominate Kevin Gregory.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So congratulations to all of those who will serve on the Measure S Citizen Oversight. City Clerk's Office will be reaching out with additional information. And then the last item that I have for your consideration tonight is the appointment of two non-voting members of the city council to the Youth Advisory Committee. This committee, you have not seen, we haven't brought this committee up during the last couple of months because we currently have a full roster there. So we're just asking tonight that the city council consider which two of you would like to serve as the non-voting members of this committee.
Well, don't all jump in at once.
I'll do it.
And I wouldn't.
That's, that's my favorite.
They meet on Tuesdays, right?
They meet, uh.
Is it Tuesdays?
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays.
You gonna do it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right, so we have a nomination for Councilman Beaver and Venable. Do you need a first and a second? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you. That concludes my presentation for this item. We will continue to run recruitments for vector control, the one last position on the Mobile Home Park Committee, and we will bring those back at a later time.
Thank you, ma'am. Real quick, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Wong reaches out to me regularly.
I'm not sure if that's the same for all y'all, so just for the record. I always enjoy our conversations about the committees that he's involved in, the Health of Ucaipa, the, specifically the Health of Ucaipa and all the innovative ways that he sees to bring a layer of additional health, whether it be mental health, physical health, spiritual health. The man is very knowledgeable in that regard. Specifically, our last discussion revolved around really taking a deeper and more aggressive approach to becoming a certified Tree City USA because of all the health benefits associated with trees. I think we're close. I think we have a lot of the prerequisites for this big organization already met on our books, and I'm excited to see staff work with the Health of Ucaipa Committee to make this a reality. I guess I'm pretty sure we already have municipal ordinances that apply to, you know, our trees and all the benefits there. So I have no doubt that Dr. Wong will also be a valuable member of the Measure S Oversight. So from my seat to you, sir, congratulations.
Okay, that moves us to item eight. Megan Wolf.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. The item before you this evening is the Stars After School Program Impact Report. I thought it was important to bring this item to the council to see what's happening in the community, to see how the city partners with the district, to provide a safe place for our children to go after school and help those students thrive in this community. I'd like to introduce Vanessa Ermilio to present the report this evening. Before I turn the microphone over to Vanessa, I do want to highlight that Vanessa used to work for the City of Ucaipa as a part-time staff at the Stars After School Program or for the Stars After School Program. She was a rec leader and a site supervisor. She left the city to work full-time for the city, the county of Riverside. And she also obtained her master's during that time. And she came back and is now the supervisor over that program, and has been doing an excellent job. So without further ado, here's Vanessa.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As Megan mentioned, my name is Vanessa Ermilio. I'm a community services supervisor. And one of my divisions of responsibility is the Stars After School Program. So the mission of the Stars After School Program is to build strong relationships with families, schools, and communities. It is our goal to provide an affordable, quality educational, recreational, and cultural program. We promote, we aim to promote the social, physical, intellectual, and emotional development of the youth that we serve. The Stars After School Program began in August 2014 and continues to provide expanded learning opportunities for students by focusing on their academic, social, emotional, and physical needs through hands-on, engaging experiences. The program serves both elementary students, transitional kindergarten through fifth grade, and middle school, middle school students, sixth grade through eighth grade. The program offers a variety of different types of activities that include physical activity, health and wellness, science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM, English and language arts, or other known as ELA, arts and cultural enrichment, and social and educational enrichment. At this time, Stars is still a fee-based program with scholarship opportunities to support families in need. Registration is conducted on a first-come, first-served basis, and families must pay online, or they can also come into the community center, and we're more than happy to help them enroll. For the current academic year, the program is available at seven school sites, which include Calamasa Elementary School, Chapman Heights Elementary School, Ridgeview Elementary School, Valley Elementary School, Wildwood Elementary School, as well as Parkview and Mesa View Middle Schools. Our staff-to-student ratios at this time, through the use of successful recruitment and onboarding of staff, we currently operate at a one-to-five ratio for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten students, a one-to-10 ratio for first-through-fifth-grade students, and one-to-twenty-four, sixth grade through eighth grade students. As far as our enrollment goes, we've experienced lots of growth over the past several years. Following the COVID Distance Learning Program and return to school sites for the 2021-2022 academic year, our program has faced consistent and substantial growth in student enrollment, reflecting the increase in demand for quality after-school programming within our community. For the 2021-to-2022 academic year, we saw 357 students average per week. In the 2022-to-2023 academic year, we saw roughly 510 students per week. And last school year, which was 2023-to-2024, we saw roughly about 634 students per week. And the current year, we averaged 690 students per week. So this growth represents a 93.28% increase in enrollment over the past four academic years, if you are comparing the 2021-2022 data to the current school year. From a year-to-year increase, from '21-'22 to '22-'23, we saw a 42.86% increase. From '22 to '23, comparing to the '23-'24 school year, we saw a 24.31% increase. And from last school year to this school year, we saw an 8.83% increase. I'd also like to highlight that our partnership with the Ucaipa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District has been a large success and has contributed to the expansion of the Stars After School Program. And really, our partnership, we really, we really could not do without them. The collaboration has enhanced program quality and broadened access to vital student resources. Over the past two years, close coordination with school administrators, teachers, and district personnel has facilitated a coherent transition for students from the school day to the after-school program. Some key highlights of this partnership include increased access to school facilities for program use, joint staff training initiatives to align educational and behavioral support strategies, shared efforts in student support services and academic reinforcement, and funding support for district families through the Expanded Learning Program. These collaborative efforts have played a significant role in expanding program capacity and improving overall student experiences. The continued commitment of both this city and the school district ensures that the Stars After School Program remains a pillar of youth development in the community, providing students with enriching environment that fosters academic success and personal growth. At this time, the staff recommends that we, that the council receive and file the report. Are there any questions?
You're doing a great job. Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember?
I think you're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you, Megan and Vanessa. Excellent job. And just a couple of things for clarification for the public. This was really funded through the governor's office, right? And the money comes from the school district, and I know that because they said on the school board. And there's a couple of positives here that our community needs to know. And it, number one, it provides a safe, structured environment for, for our students after schools. I think there's some anecdotal evidence that it does increase test scores, though Kelly didn't get back to me today. I think they're on spring break. It enhances academic success, there's no doubt about that. And the growth of the program is substantial, like 90%, I think. Promotes physical and mental well-being, which is one of the catalysts after COVID became an issue. And this just enhances that, that getting back to some normalization the last few years. And it fosters social, emotional development. And the school district has that PBIS program, Positive Behavior Intervention. And that's a key component, that you're doing that after schools. That supports what the school district's doing for better outcomes for students, especially as just good citizens. And that's good stuff, what you guys are doing. It supports working families, as some folks don't get off at 2:00. They're able to get their children that are actually involved in some activities, so they're not home alone, they're not maybe watched by somebody that isn't paying attention to them. That's why this program is valuable, and they're actually doing something in learning. And it serves a broad population, if you look at it. It's, it's available at multiple schools, as you guys outlined. Eight schools, seven schools?
Seven.
Seven schools? I mean, that's awesome. And the good collaboration you have with the principals and the deans at them schools and the services that are provided. And it does, in, in some way, I think, the strengthening, the collaboration between the school district and the city and our community is key. And, you know, I talk about that a lot, you know. But I think you guys have done a wonderful job of just growing that thing with no financial risk to us, because it's paid through the state. So thank you for doing that, and making it really in a professional way that your folks are trained now, more in line with what the school district is doing as teachers. And I really appreciate that personally. Thank you.
If I may, I just want to clarify one point. The program is still a fee-based program, so for students who do not qualify for ELOP funding, they do pay a fee for the program. But those that do qualify do get the program for free under the state funding. In addition, this program has no direct costs that impact the general fund. So as you stated, Councilmember Miller, it's important that we take care of our community. And we are doing that through this community, and there's not a financial impact with the direct costs.
Thank you, Megan.
Any further comment?
I think, as we've talked before, the, the ability to integrate and have our deputies maybe do some of that hang with the deputy program stuff. We've maybe do some of that hang with the deputy program stuff, we've discussed, I think, in the past, no enforcement. They're not there to keep, you know, talk to little Johnny or little Susie. It's there to just to build that, that relationship, that the deputies in our community are a trusted face, that they can be, they can be approached by these kids, that they know them. I think, speaking for those of you in the audience who were born in the late eighties and, and who's listening, if you were able to benefit from the Just Say No, McGruff the Crime Fighting Dog, DARE, and all those War on Drug efforts, it really served that, that role of building and forging a relationship with law enforcement early on to the point where a lot of the police officers that I work with that are my age, that's when they became, that's when they became fascinated and wanted to be a police officer, was early on in elementary school. We've, we've, we as a society have gone away from that. I think, I think that's why, right now, law enforcement as a, as an industry is, is seeing a recruitment issue, because by the time recruiters get to applicant-aged, I'll say kids, because they're youngsters, their impression of law enforcement is that all cops are fill in the explicitive. That's what they've been told by social media and by, by the fake, by the fake news media or what have you, that cops are the bad guys. We, as, as, as city leaders, we have an opportunity to maybe encourage our, our first responders, fire, and law enforcement alike, to maybe become more interactive with Stars. And it serves twofold, right? We're, we're, we're introducing our law enforcement officers to the kids in the community as an approachable face, somebody that can be trusted and go to if there's a problem. Also, puts a star in motion in front of a, a vulnerable target, right? It, it serves to have those would-be criminals, just there to be nice guys, doesn't mean they can't transition to take down a bad guy in a moment's notice. And so if, think there's a way we can either do it, we've, we've talked about it with Kelly, about having it as a part of a school function where they take pizzas to the school class, they got the highest test scores or what have you, and really just be a friend on campus. But I think Stars Program is an awesome opportunity without really impacting the curriculum that needs to be taught as well. So there might be an opportunity for us to work with your office, work with our Chief of Police, to see if we can maybe forge an even better partnership between law enforcement and our school-aged children in concert with our, our city staff at the Stars Program.
We would be honored to, to do that. And also, we have a really great relationship with the Sheriff's Department and, and the Fire Department, and I know that the SSS Courtney would love to, to do something like this with us, and I know that they partner often with the city to, to do things, so we could definitely add that to the list.
Thank you so much.
Well, back when you were an explorer.
It's a long time ago.
A little while ago.
Yeah.
We had a program here in town, and, and I know our deputies have a lot on their plate. I don't know how, might be able to do this work with the captain, but there used to be an adopted deputy program.
Yep.
And we would go on the campus, and whether it was just you sat and had lunch with some kids, you played tetherball, dodgeball, wall ball, whatever it was, you just went, and you had certain campuses, you had a handful of deputies, you were assigned to a certain campus, and that's where you went, and like once a month, you'd go by and just interact with them. So I don't know if, I know they've got a lot on their plate, and they're spread thin, and they're, you know, doing a lot, but if there's any way, something along those lines, maybe, I mean, I'm sure the deputies will be excited to interact but thrilled to have something else to do. But, but it is good, because I think too, to Justin's point is that, you know, those, those kids need a positive, positive interaction with law enforcement. And whether it's at the old farmer's market or Iris Festival when we had it.
Right.
Or, or the schools, just, and some people may disagree, but handing out pencils or stickers or letting them turn on the lights on your squad car and talking on the PA, just is something that kind of maybe sparks an interest, so.
Yeah, we, you know, kind of going on that, there is an opportunity for the deputies to, you know, I, I understand they're busy, and I'm not trying to add more to their plate, but Chief Malinowski had said like three years ago in a presentation that Cal Fire, facing the same recruitment issues as, as law enforcement, maybe to a lesser degree, but they started realizing that their recruiting effort started in like the fifth grade. Not intentionally, but they realized over the, over time that that is when they were actually getting people like, oh, I wanted to be a firefighter, I was in fifth grade and the fire department came out, and that's when I knew, right? If as an industry, law enforcement doesn't start doing the same thing and trying to capitalize on the fact that today's, we won't see, we, and I say we, law enforcement, won't see the return on that investment for maybe ten years, fifteen years, but it's going to happen. And it may happen when the newest deputy at your station is a deputy chief, but he'll appreciate the fact that he's helping keep those applications coming in so we can have a safe community of people who knew, that deputy came to my school, gave me a pencil, he gave me a sticker, and I knew right then, I, I want to be a deputy. So I think that's something that we need to, we, as civic leaders, as law enforcement leaders, have to be cognizant of that, we're not going to fix this recruiting issue nationwide unless we start kind of looking at our history and realizing that it worked. DARE, McGruff, all that, it was functional. And I know there's law enforcement officers in the audience who know this, I'm sure they're nodding their heads, I might even look at it, I'm positive that they've experienced it as well, so we just got to get back to it, and I think this is an opportunity for it, so.
Any other comments?
No, I think it's pretty covered.
Mr. Miller? Good?
All right. Thank you.
All right, so it was a receiving file. Thank you for the presentation. Number ten, Mr. Phil White.
Number nine?
Oh, my apologies. Number nine. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Item nine tonight is the Community Activity Grant Program Guidelines and Funding Levels and the Non-Department, Not-for-Profit Organizations for Fiscal Year 25-26. The Community Activity Grant Program, also known as CAG, was established in 2010. The program was implemented to support local organizations providing valuable services and programming and enhance accountability on how the government funds were spent. The overall intent of the program was not to sustain local ongoing programs or services, but to supply the seed money to support new program services and/or events in the community. The program is reviewed annually to determine continuation of the program, funding levels, and guidelines outlining overall eligibility for the upcoming fiscal year. On March 10th, the CAG Ad-Hoc Committee met, with the exception of Councilman Beaver, and they reviewed the options and recommended the following. Amend the fiscal year 25-26 guidelines to designate the Share Community and Nutrition Center as the only city facility made available to accommodate in-kind fee waiver requests, and maintain the appropriations of $40,000 for in-kind fee waivers and $20,000 for financial requests for the fiscal year 25-26 CAG cycle. In 2015, the city council approved allocating funds for certain community organizations through the budget process versus the CAG program since the programs and events were held on an annual basis and benefit city services. If you turn your attention to the screen, you'll see, this slide shows you the organization name, the program which they provide here, the, the services that they provide here in the City of Yucapu, the current funding levels for fiscal year 24-25, and the proposed funding levels for fiscal year 25-26. The ad hoc committee did recommend that the city council appropriate funding in fiscal year 25-26 and that the budget amounts remain the same. Tonight's staff is recommending that the city council approve the CAG application review ad hoc committee's recommendation to amend the fiscal year 25-26 guidelines to designate the Share Community and Nutrition Center as the only city facility made available to accommodate in-kind fee waiver requests, approve the committee's recommendation to maintain the appropriations of $40,000 for in-kind fee waivers and $20,000 for financial requests for fiscal year 25-26, and approve the committee's recommendation to appropriate funding for fiscal year 25-26 to non-department, not-for-profit organizations as outlined in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, I think we're good. So do I have a motion then? Or first, we have any comment?
We have no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendations as presented by the staff report?
So moved.
I have a first, I have a second. I'll make the second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Now, now it's number ten.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. A strategic plan has been recognized as the guiding document for Yucapu's future. Key stakeholder involvement early and often is, often is imperative to successfully developing a plan. In our case, the Yucapu community, community is the key stakeholder, and we want to maximize participation. An independent consultant will be tasked with many components of the strategic plan, including facilitating community workshops to build consensus and alignment. Accordingly, staff is preparing a request for a proposal to procure a strategic planning consultant. Item ten does not have an immediate financial impact, but it is an opportunity for the city council to deliberate whether to direct staff to proceed with the RFP and initiate the strategic planning journey. The Finance Committee did review this item at the meeting on March 19th and is recommending approval, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff?
Yep. Was it two meetings, maybe three meetings? It started to blur together. A few meetings ago, there was, when we talked about the budget, there was a line item relative to this regarding consultant. There was, it had a price tag with it of $100,000, I believe. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are we still anticipating $100,000 price tag associated with a consulting firm?
Best guess, yes. There's a lot of context with that number, that was a budget number, and so at this, it was a, it's kind of a stab in the dark. At this point, there's no price tag associated with it. It's a, release the RFP, see what comes back, scope out the process, and then come back and report a, a more specific dollar amount. Shot-in-the-dark number, still remains that number.
Okay. My, and forgive me, I don't, I don't mean to sound pointed or, or direct, but I do, I, I want to make sure we're being fiscally responsible. How many folks in your department do you have working that we can, even if we said one of them is going to be dedicated exclusively to this type of action for the next seven months, we're still substantially under $100,000 price tag? Can somebody in your, can anybody in our finance department have the skill set necessary to do this? Can, can we have them like analyze, we're talking, I think we can beat the $100,000 price tag, even if we say, you know what, we're going to find the top three best cities in Southern California that have a great financial structure, and we're going to pay for them to go there and for a week, sit down with their finance director and all things, knowing about that, come back here, and then your exclusive job for the next four, five, six, seven months, and we're still under that $100,000 price tag by, by a considerable amount, I would, I'd be willing to venture. Do we have the, do we have the expertise, the skill set, the, the knowledge, the education in-house to do this without outsourcing it? Because you are our expert. You folks sitting before us are our city's expertise on these matters, that's why we have you as our finance director, that's why we, for me to sitting where he's at, because we trust him on all things engineering. That's why our city assistant city manager is sitting where she, where she's sitting, because we trust her, right? And the go, the same goes for everybody in this room, his staff. They wouldn't be in this position if they're not trusted. So we, as a council, rely on you as our, as our experts, right, to tell us what it is, so we can make an informed decision. Now, I'm willing to accept that there are things that are so dynamic that they fall outside of the expertise of a city staff member. And in those cases, certainly, let's lean on the subject matter experts of the industry to come in here and, and offer us their expertise on the matter. But my question remains, can, can we do this in-house? Can we still be effective at the end of 2025 and say, you know what, Yucapu's finance department knocked it out of the park? We have a, we have a strategic plan we can stand behind. It is modeled after some of the most financially secure cities in the area. We, we have the documentation approved because we sent some experts that we already have on our payroll to bring back that data. That's a pretty direct question, but I'm going to ask it. I mean, it was long, but it's pretty direct, yes or no, can we do it?
Yeah, I, I may have a equally long answer. The, the short answer is no. What we're looking for in a strategic plan, we do not have the expertise in-house to, to do that. The, the context is with, with that goes for a while. The, the technical side of the long-term financial plan of a component, yeah, we have the, we have excellent accountants in-house, we can, we can hammer that out. The real benefit of the strategic plan is not sitting behind the desk and crunching numbers and, and running data. It's gathering the community, having the community split into task force, say, this is what we want, this is our vision for Yucapu. Facilitating those, that dialogue, identifying ultimately, where does the community want Yucapu to land? If that was directed by staff, done by staff, I would anticipate that there'd be limited participation from the, from the community. There's a healthy distrust with, if you, if you're employed by the city, you're them against us, and this is really a, a plan to bring the community together. What does the community want for Yucapu? And for, in order to be successful, it requires community participation, we want to maximize that, and having a third-party consultant that is an expert in that area to be able to bring that together and facilitate that process is where the value is in, in doing this by a third party.
I'm cautiously supportive of at least the first process of getting, let's see, let's see the numbers from my position. We can do the RFP, that doesn't cost us anything, have people come back, and I would entertain even interviewing whoever applies for the position to be a consultant, to ask them some of these questions as well. What I, where I was hung up a few weeks ago, following the budget and what was, and I think I even spoke on the matter, is when we're paying that big of a price tag, we would dictate the terms of, of the deal, and I think, you know, not seeing the results of that payment until next year, I had an issue with that. This is a 2025 goal, so I would, I would say that we would, if we're going to pay, that $100,000, that's a lot of money. And if, if that is, God bless you, if that is what ultimately comes before us, I would, I would say that this council has an opportunity and an obligation to hold that consultant's feet to the fire and require periodic updates and, and really, let's, let's earn that $100,000, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money. And I, I still, not certain I would be supportive of that big of a price tag, it should have come before us, but I am, as I said, trusting that you are the expert on the matter, you say that that is what needs to be done. I'm willing to take it to the next step and, and at least hear what some of the subject matter experts in the region have to say about it. But I, I think, I think, should we find ourselves in a position where of the opinion that we don't want to spend that, I have full faith and confidence in our finance department to still bring us a strategic plan absent a consultant. I think you guys can do it. And, and you're right, there, there is a healthy distrust of government. I think that transcends Yucapu. We find that at every, every city that I interface with in my professional career. I've talked about, thank you.
I, I would, I would also like to add that a strategic plan is not a required document for a city, and, and because it's not required, we do have an opportunity to scope the, the final product accordingly, so we can get as detailed, spread as wide as we want to in the strategic plan, and if we say that's going to be too expensive, let's whittle that down, we can bring in the scope as well. So we have a lot of opportunity to scope.
Thank you, sir.
I know we probably have dialogue we want to go through, but do we have any public comment on this particular item?
No comments on this item.
Okay, I couldn't remember if I asked that question. All right, go ahead.
You know, a lot of times I just hear, no, 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 instead of, maybe we can make this happen, you know, it's, when people come to us and see if we can, you know, make things happen like what Justin, Mr. Beaver, sorry, is, is trying, you know, to do, and it was automatically, it was no, you know, we can't do it and stuff. Instead, why don't you think that, hey, maybe we can do things like this, you know what I mean? I hear so many things about just the flags not being lowered to, for our fallen officers and stuff, and it's absolutely no, 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 no. Why can't we go and look for something to where we, maybe we can, you know? Is there a flag police that's going to come and, and give us a ticket for having it half masked? Maybe we can go and, and, and start opening our minds to different things to, maybe we can do these things, or, hey, let me look into it, see if I can do this, instead of no all the time. That's what I'd like to hear, you know, on the, the city council goals and everything like that stuff, when we come up with an idea like Mr. Beaver says, you know, it was automatic, right? And, and this last, you know, then you change your story, you know, maybe we can, a little bit. That's what I want to hear more often.
Thank you, councilmembers, appreciate your comments, and if you remember, we did establish, one of the goals is to establish a strategic plan, which we're going to build in the financial strategic plan, which is the key to everything. And it really is the roadmap of where we want to go. We're not just picking consultants out of the air to spend money to do something. The strategic plan is that roadmap of how you're going to get from A to B over the next 10 to 15 years. And being involved in strategic plans before, there are people you do bring in that facilitate what you're going to do in your city. That's why you include your citizens, your business leaders. what you're going to do in your city. That's why you include your citizens, your business leaders, people that have, that are stakeholders in your community of what that vision is they want to see in the community. When you develop the plan, then you just plan around it. Everything folds into that. And then you stick to it. That's the roadmap. Uneventualities like a housing market dying on us, the things that can happen, how much reserves will we need? If this happens, then what do we do? You plan all that out. Now, things will change. We know that. We can't really predict the future, but we can pretty much predict tax revenue. We get our HDL report. We know what businesses are coming in. We know what projects we're going to try to approve if we can. The key is, we have to have a sense of community that we're serving the community, that staff isn't steering it. You know, we're not steering what we want, and the only way you can do that is through a vibrant strategic plan that is facilitated with openness, that we all agree this is where we want to go. And then you, then you plan how to do it. And then it's a document, like, like our director of finance said, it's, you don't have to do it, but it is part of our goals to get us lined up of where we need to go. It's good business to do it this way. And, and there's a lot of things in the business world that we could do a little bit better in government, quite frankly. And, and there are some, you know, things that we could do better in government, quite frankly, a lot. And it definitely be in stewards of how we spend tax money. You know, there's this feeling out there, and I've been hearing it for the last couple of months, that budgetary items will come up and it's very, very, discussed very well on money. We have money. You know, our job is to spend it wisely. We, we do have money. Would you agree, Director?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're, we're fine. We're going to be okay. Now, yes, there were some things that, that are helping that. We did have a structural deficit, but there's a, there's some explanations of how maybe that was explained. But we are fine. We're going to be okay. But we have to have a plan of how we're going to spend the money strategically. And really, the conversation I had that we had talked about is how do you fold the financial strategic plan in this? I think that's the most important thing. What are we going to do with money over future? Because this, that's what the public is really concerned about, that I feel right now. How are you, what are you going to do strategically for, for the future, depending on all this stuff that's built in it? What is development's going to look like? What is our service level going to look like? What are contracts going to look like in the future? What are service levels that we really anticipate in the next 10 years? What is our community, what is our debt service? What are the things that we have to repair over the next five years that we're already behind on? What are our streets look like? All this is all part of that plan, and you just plan it out. And then you focus everybody on, on tackling the issues that you need to do. And the reason you bring in the facilitator, and they're quite busy right now, by the way. It, it's hard to get good ones right now. They're quite busy. And you just curtail it to what, you, you can change the scope of what you want. I think our director of finance was just trying to pick a number, not to shock everybody, but that was conservative a, a little bit, to say, well, it could be this, but it may be less. But we won't know until we get an RFP, based on the scope that we're going to describe and what we're looking for. And I'm hoping our community will help us drive this of what they really want. I mean, we just had a discussion last meeting about a library. And what are we, are we going to put that in a strategic plan? And when do we want to see it? And how can we do it? Where would we put it? What are we going to do? That stuff goes in there. I don't mean to be so passionate over it, but if we don't do these things, you can't do the other stuff. And we agreed to do this as our goals as a board. I, either we do it or we don't. And, and we can't just keep pushing things down the freeway, metaphorically speaking. Okay? That's my opinion. I don't mean to be so passionate about it, but if, if we don't do this, it's hard to do the other stuff, in my opinion. Just from a business standpoint and doing good government with common sense. My opinion.
I agree with everything you said. Just a point of clarification. I agree with you. I'm not saying we shouldn't have a strategic plan. I think that's, I think all five of these goals should be, will, we have a history. They will be met. We'll be there. My, my contention is I think we employ some trusted industry experts. They're already here. My, my, I don't, despise government. No, no, I know. I just, I despise government where they say, that's a good idea. We all agree. Hire somebody to tell us that we agree. What? You want to hire somebody to come in here and say, yep, you guys got it? Cool. Now that we did that, we're going to form a committee. We're going to talk about how much we agree about this. By the time we get down to it, it's seven months down the road, we spent a hundred thousand dollars, when we all agreed to the same thing anyways. We need a strategic plan. In order for us to have a strategic plan, the folks that are in the, in our gallery and are listening online from around the world, they're going to chime in and say, that's important. It's happened before. We need a Y-PAC. We need a share station. We don't need portables for our city hall. We've, we've had it before. And I think we've learned, and I, I would like to say the city has, has developed, to the point where I, I think, it would be, it would be, it would be a tall order, and it would be a task for your department. But I think there was, there would be an opportunity for us to develop some of our in-house staff and say, hey, build, bring us a strategic plan. We're going to, we're going to set town hall dates. We're going to discuss the matter. We're going to really engage our public with what has been built. We're going to, we're going to really lean on social media to get the messaging out there that we're looking for the 10, the five, 10, 15, 20-year plan of Ucaipa. Where are we going to be? How are we going to invest our money to get there? I'm not certain, I'm not, I don't know if I agree that we, that we have to bring in an outside facilitator, and that, that was my only point. Now, I am willing to say that I will, from, as of right now, and I don't, I don't think there'll be any change of this, I'll support item number 10. 10? Yes. So that we can see, because I think we should be informed. Because if a facilitator comes back and says, I can do that for pennies on the dollar, and I have a track record that says I can, sure, fine. I don't want to spend a six-figure, six-figure number on somebody to tell the city of Ucaipa what the city of Ucaipa wants. The people will tell us what they want. They're here. We have, as a negative consequence to a horrible last two years, we have a more engaged population now than we did when I first got elected. I think it's a good thing. The way we got here was maybe bad, but we're here now, and we have an engaged population. They're telling us what they want. Let's lean on them. I don't know, we didn't need to spend somebody, spend a lot of money on somebody telling us what, we are here, what we're hearing. My two cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Neil.
In the finance meeting the other day, Mr. White, I do believe that you stressed to us that all five of these goals actually is part of the strategic plan. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I, what, what I tried to communicate was, in, in, in my opinion, each of the five goals that are listed as council goals are either components of a strategic plan or could be the result of, of our strategic plan. So a, a deliver a balanced budget would be a, a long-hanging fruit, basic requirement of any good long-term financial plan. A long-term financial plan is a stated component of a strategic plan. The enhanced emergency preparedness goal, that, that I would anticipate would be a result of our strategic plan, would, would say that Ucaipa would want to enhance those. And same thing with the, with the last item too, that, that would, that could be a result of the strategic plan to say, hey, we, we need to do better in these areas. But, but to that, as I looked at these goals, each of the five, I, I kind of saw one goal with, with different components of it, all saying strategic plan. Yes.
Thank you. Yes. So having said all of that and everything that's been said here, I do agree with Councilman Beaver that we need to keep the price down on this. You know, a hundred thousand is a lot of money. And if we can keep that price down, then definitely that's what we need to do.
Okay, so with all the dialogue considered here, do we have a motion to move this forward to an RFP process to at least see what our numbers are, so that we can make a more informed decision at a later date? So moved. You got a first? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
First and second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Ben Matlock. Item number 11.
All right. Thank you all, Mayor and city council members. It is our time for the annual progress report on both the general plan and the housing element of the general plan. So why do we do this? Well, one, it's required by law pursuant to, to state law section 6500 or 65400. But also does help, one, and kind of inform both the progress of meeting the regional housing needs allocation, track the progress and implementation of both the general plan and the housing element. Also discloses just the general activity level.
Hold on just a second, I'm sorry. I don't know if anyone can read that slide. It's pretty, it's pretty, can they see it out there in the audience? Okay, I'm sorry.
It's visible on those screens. I don't know why it's so dim.
I just want to make sure they could see it, because from what we're seeing up here, I think I can make up the top title. That's about it. So.
Or if we dim one of the lights, it usually helps for when we do plan and commission. The other one. That one.
Maybe. Okay. Carry on, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no worries. And kind of general, and then also for the state's benefits to highlight general trends that are occurring throughout the state. And so every city is required to report on this, as well as the counties. And also as accountability for the state, state law really has increased enforceability of the housing community development department. So HCD has a lot more role in terms of enforcing the housing element and the building and construction of housing. And so they use our annual progress report as a tool to help in, as part of their enforcement tool. And they view our housing element as a contract between the state and the local jurisdiction. And so they do read the reports. They do look at all the numbers that we send them. And as part of that, if we don't implement our housing element, it can result in decertification. And there is a lot of data that goes into this. A lot of work goes into preparing this. We have tried to set ourselves up for success with our new EPNL permit software to make life a lot easier. But this was the year of having old data and new data. And so I do want to commend my team, but this is kind of a snapshot of part of the data that goes into this. This is building permit records, entitlement dates, everything that goes into every single project, every single parcel, every single time an action happens. It's a lot of data. It's hard to also view. So you can imagine us on a screen zooming in, trying to go through. So I do want to commend Matty Jordan and Katie Sim on my team for their hard work on getting this all put together for this. But can you imagine doing this all day for, for weeks? I cannot imagine what like a city of Los Angeles has to do doing this. I would not want to be doing that as my job. Anyways, so as part of our priority, we did have 217 units that were completed during the calendar year. And we did have 142 units that were submitted for building permits. One of the key metrics that we did have is we had 38 accessory dwelling units permitted, and our housing element assumes that we would be building at least 25 per year. This is a good thing, because if we fall below this number, the state says that we have to readjust our strategy and essentially do a mid-cycle refresh of our housing element. So this means that we're still in good spots. So as part of kind of the halfway cycle, we are still ahead of that, so we don't have to touch our strategy there. But we are seeing a few issues that are impacting the activity as we're moving forward into the second half of the housing cycle. One is the higher interest rates are impacting the rate of development. The interest rates are still lower than the long-term historical rates, but certainly if you had bought a house in 2000, in 2020, the rates were pretty low. They are much higher than they are now. So the, the consumer mindset is definitely very different. So that has hampered kind of where the market is. We have seen especially for accessory dwelling units, the Ucaipa Valley Water District has changed their fee structure. And so those have increased quite a bit for ADUs. And so we have gotten a number of designers that have called to let us know that that is impacting their business for building those. Certainly, the increase in material costs has also been a impediment. And then just the product options for where the market demand is, is also an issue that has been impacting just the rate of activity for the city of Ucaipa. Now, the arena progress, we are obligated to plan for 286, 280, 2,800 and 66 units over the eight-year cycle. We have built 749 to date of this cycle. And so that means that to make the, the kind of the metric, we would have to build approximately 423 units per each year. We don't actually have to see that all these units get built, but we do have to facilitate the development of them. However, if we fall behind the schedule, we technically do open ourselves up for a number of streamlined review processes and reduced control, including those under SB 35. Luckily, we have not seen much activity with SB 35 projects in the city of Ucaipa, but it is something that we are conscious of, that we may, that someone could come in and say, hey, we want to do a project this way. And we would not be able to say no to that review process. Now, we do have 34 different housing programs in our housing element. We have been knocking them down one by one and keeping them going. Some key activities that we did do, the EPNL permit software was a big milestone for this past year. One, it does help with the tracking of projects, so it does make the review a lot more transparent for both the applicant, the developer, and members of the public. But also to the turnaround time for the reviews is a lot faster. There's a number of state requirements on how long projects are supposed to be within the city during the plan check process. We had always strived to be well ahead of that schedule, but we are now far and above that. And so we are able to make sure that we're not in conflict with any of those state laws. We did have the Starling Heights specific plan that was adopted, so this relates to one of our strategies, which is related to specific plans. The Wine Country specific plan was also adopted and did receive both a light hole and state award for that. And then the freeway corridor and development code is in progress right now. And so again, the housing element, making sure that we're implementing it is part and parcel to the annual progress report and making sure that we're following that, otherwise HCD will recognize that we are falling behind. And then the general plan progress, we have been busy. We are working on a number of advanced planning initiatives and the program implementation. Key highlights, so the freeway corridor specific plan is one such project. It does implement two key goals and two different elements of the general plan, one program in the housing element and over 60 different policies. Since council had reviewed it, the following has happened. We have a website on the update and the proposed changes. We have a survey that residents have been filling out. And we did also do community outreach at Winterfest. We are working continuously with the property owners and trying to manage some of the updates that they would like to see. We have received somewhat conflicting information from one of the owners, but I think we do have a game plan that makes sense for the community. And then as part of the development code update, we're really trying to improve the eligibility and the, the modernization of the code. And so we are looking forward to that. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And then following this, I'll submit it to the state for both Office of Plan and Research, that has now a new acronym, and then HCD. And we will fulfill our statutory requirement. And that is it.
Thank you, sir. Council have any questions?
Good job, Ben.
Yeah, Mr. Matlock, I had one question. I looked at past council meetings, and I think the freeway corridor specific plan wasn't approved, but it was sent back for discussion with the property owners. There was supposed to be a meeting. So where are we at on that?
We are trying to get the meeting with the property owner scheduled for likely early April. So we have been working on some revisions to the land use plan that make sense. And so rest of the property owners are on board with updates to the plan. And so we're just trying to nail down the last one in order to get that there. As I mentioned, we had received some conflicting kind of plan ideas, one of which were pretty significant increases in development intensity, and so we've been trying to hammer those out. So.
Mr. Matlock, when's the last time we actually tried to formulate a meeting?
With the property owners?
Yeah.
I've been in constant communication with a number of the property owners throughout the, the time.
When's the last time?
To have a meeting with them?
Yeah. When did you try to get a meeting together? Last, this month, last month? When, when did you try?
That, I don't know. We've been working on the, the one land use plan and trying to get the, the one outstanding property owner and trying to figure out their strategy. We had tried to meet with them a number of different months, including their representative team a couple of different times, and they did cancel those meetings at those different times. But we have, I have talked with someone that's been kind of intervening with them last week, for example, and we are making those final changes.
Email, phone call, or how are we communicating? Email?
A lot of those are through phone call. A lot of those are through phone call.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any comments on this?
No comments.
All right, and it's receiving file, correct? All right. So, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. That brings us to City Council member comments and reports.
Sir?
Ma'am?
You did add item number 12 regarding flags for discussion.
Oh, oh, that's right. Okay.
So, if, on this particular matter, I think there's an urgency, urgency portion, where we wanna honor the memory of a fallen deputy before his services. And so, and then the secondary part, where I think we need to revisit whatever policies are in place regarding how the city of Ucaipa operates relative to the, the flags outside of our city hall. So I would, I guess, two, two items in one motion. My, my motion would be that we, tonight, lower the flags to have staff in recognition of, in memory of Deputy Quavis and this ultimate sacrifice he made. And the second portion of my motion would be that we ask staff to bring us back a report on our current policy, why it exists, and how we can then instruct them to modify it in a way that, that makes sense, so that we can not have this issue in the future. So that's, that's my motion.
Mayor Thorpe, I'd like to have, for me, give some context to the flag policy, how we've gotten here, directions from council of past. And the flag is already lowered.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. There, on two separate occasions over the last 10, 11 years, City Council has considered a flag policy. The first time was in 2014, where City Council reviewed the, the state's, or Cal Fire's flag policy, as well as the counties. And at the time, the, the City Council decided to not implement our own local policy, we were just gonna follow the, the state and federal guidelines. And again, in 2021, we went through the same process, and council's, council's direction was to not, not continue with a local flag policy, but we can certainly do that now at this time.
I think the problem lies that the deputies that I'm friends with feel, without, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, they wear the same uniform as the deputy that died. We contract with them. Our chief of police by figure is Captain Walker, but our chief of police is Sheriff Dykes on contract. I would be willing to venture that Deputy Quavis served in this city as a, on smash operations and crime suppression operations. And I think it is too broad of a brush stroke to say, we're just gonna do what the state does, because that robs us of the opportunity to honor local heroes, local leaders. Should a elected city councilman who served for 15, 20 years perish and, and his life come to an end, we're not gonna lower this flags to have staff for a man who served on this council for 20, 30 years. That seems, I don't know if that's the, I don't think that following the state's approach on anything is maybe the right idea, but certainly on something that is, it, it, it's a symbol of, of our respect and paying respect to, to the man who, who gave his life, or the man who served for so long and then ultimately passed away. Whatever the situation comes, I think the city of Ucaipa should be not so locked in with a policy that is, well, can't do it, because that doesn't make it, I don't think that makes any sense. I think we, as a, I think that's where, there, we do have, we have policy, black and white. But we also have, we need to have independent thinkers and critical thinkers in leadership that say, yeah, on this one, we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna do what's right. We're gonna lower the flag, and then we'll, we'll address that later. Or do we maintain our current policy and then have the mayor maybe have ultimate authorities direct staff now lower it based on trends, based on needs, based on whatever the case may be? Because I think that's, that, it just, I don't wanna insult the deputy sheriffs who patrol our city and make them think that the city of Ucaipa doesn't care that, that a hero was lost last week, because we certainly do, and we wanna pay respect to that man. And, and falling back on a policy that just has such a broad brush, brush stroke of, well, the state doesn't do it, we don't do it. The state of California, Sacramento, doesn't know Hector Quavis. We do. And so I think we have an opportunity to honor somebody, even if the state doesn't. And I think the flags of the Capitol were lowered in Deputy Quavis's honor as well.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I, Councilmember Beaver makes a great point. I think this is an example where policy, you know, and then there's common sense. I mean, of course, we can lower the flag, you know? I mean, come on. These are decisions we can make. I don't care what the policy is on that. I mean, we're not, you know, violating some major policy in life, it's just common sense. So I'm glad we lowered the flag. Thank you, Jennifer. We should do that in honor, or whoever made that decision, thank you. That's the right thing to do. And if somebody doesn't like it, I'm sorry, they can email us or whatever they wanna do. But that's just the right thing to do for a fallen officer. And of course, us officers are gonna feel that way, you guys know that. So, but, you know, these in, in line duty deaths are serious stuff, and it affects family members and friends and people that were working, and dispatchers and everything else. So I'm, I'm hoping we can always do something to honor our fallen, public safety, citizens, anything that's major in our community, we should always honor them. So I agree with Councilmember Beaver on this one.
So given that they're already down, I'll modify my motion, that we still ask for it to come back in a formal, agendized manner, so we can have time to have a discussion about the policy and then amend it and direct staff to amend it. That would be my motion, then.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, you got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right. Now, City Council member comments and reports. So Dr. Wong brought it up earlier, just don't forget that April 26 is the run for the hills. And then, over the weekend, myself and Councilwoman Woolsey had the honor to honor one of our folks here in town is having their 100th birthday. Been involved with Ucaipa Seventh Day Adventist Church for years, assistant pastor there. They had a reception for her, a party, I should say, on Sunday, right? And, and people come by, and she's awesome lady. She's had, she grew up in a, married her football quarterback sweetheart, and, and lived in Mountain Home Village for 50 years, and her husband was in the military, and they traveled around for, for years. And she's been involved in Loma Linda and Ucaipa and Cala Mesa. There's just a lot of involvement in our local community, so it's one, one neat little thing going on in our, our community right now. We'll start with Councilwoman Woolsey. Do you have any reports you wanna make?
Yes, I do. Last week, I attended the Ucaipa Valley Water District meeting. The general manager updated the status of their solar project that they've been working on at different facilities. Their project consists of solar panels, batteries, and a natural gas generator. So when we were discussing generators a couple of weeks ago, there was a concern in regards to how long the batteries would provide power. Their batteries will run for four days, and they would be providing enough power to operate the very large pumps that they have to operate to keep the water and sewage running for 24 hours, because it can't stop. I do believe that considering some type of solar for the city facilities is worth considering in our long-term plan. So just something to be thinking about there. And then Friday, I did have my training for the omni-trans alternate, and Justin is the director on that. And however, when he can't go, I will be there, as they did encourage the alternate to come anyway, so that you are informed and ready to go. So I will be doing that. I attended the all-day workshop in Rancho on Friday. They were reviewing their strategic plans, like somebody said, everybody's busy, because they're all doing this. They went through the last five years, and then they discussed their plans for the next five years. And one thing that really jumped out was kind of interesting. One of the suggestions presented by Mayor Baca from Rialto was looking into the possibility of omni-trans developing some kind of partnership, maybe a pilot program or a contractual, contractual agreement with school districts to help with busing students to school and alleviate this traffic congestion that everybody's dealing with. You know, we definitely know we have our problem down here. So it's just something to watch for. I don't know if they're gonna really pursue it or not, but I thought it was a good idea. That's all.
Mr. Miller?
I have anything, thank you.
Wow, okay. Mayor Proton?
Well, I got an adopt a park maintenance event coming up April 12 at 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 over at El Dorado. Hopefully, we can get a lot of people to come out. Mr. Wong, maybe we can get the healthy Ucaipa to come and support the chosen open spaces on this. We'll get with Sarah, with the youth advisory, and, and maybe get some people out there. So, and that's all I have. He has runs coming up, and we have Music and Art Festival coming up, and Sarah Evans is coming.
Sarah?
Yeah, so.
April, right?
April, yeah. That's it.
Councilmember Beaver? Okay. That brings us to Acting City Manager. Any announcements?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, that will conclude our regular scheduled City Council meeting for today, and our next meeting will be April 14, 2025, and the current time is 7:51. And we will continue with our closed session.